We're ready to.
Okay, thank you all for coming to this special meeting.
Are we gonna do have a moment?
Yes. Before we commence, I don't think you need to really belabor what happened this week in Texas. And as little as a moment of silence does, it does a lot. So I'd like us all to take a moment, contemplate to yourself what your beliefs are related to this and give out our thoughts and prayers to all of the. That said, almost ninety percent of Americans are in favor of
Ninety-one.
background checks.
Yeah.
Against background checks. They have no reason other than money. So, call the order. It is now seven oh four PM on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call. Me?
Sean, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Dean Serwin?
Dean Serwin, yeah.
Bianca Richards?
Present.
Annie Chang Long?
Yeah.
Kenneth Gross?
Here.
FJ Pratt?
Here.
Thank you.
I would hope to have some public comments. Do we have anyone on Zoom that's here to do public comment?
Uh, we have, we have, uh, no public comments were made in advance of the meeting, but we do have Margaret Lee. I've just asked if she would like to make a comment. Shall I unmute her?
Yep, go ahead and unmute her.
General or on each?
Well, I guess, is it on one of the agenda items?
I believe it's on an agenda item, so do we have to wait?
So Sean, if it's on an agenda item, she waits till we get to that item. So only general public comments. So she's probably speaking on a particular topic, right?
Yeah.
So have her, have her hang on a little bit.
Just a little bit, Margaret.
So, action discussion, item two, review and approve draft minutes of regular meeting of May twelve, twenty twenty-two. Sean, I believe you make those minutes up. Thank you. They were very thorough as always. I was unable to attend that meeting. And I really appreciate being able to feel like I was. So did anyone have any comments, questions, or?
I'm sorry, Kathy, can you unmute the computer in the conference room? Thank you.
Annie, did you have something? Okay, um, so can we get a motion to approve the?
Yeah, I moved that the minutes of May twelfth be approved with no corrections, edits.
Second, second. All those in favor? Do we need a vote, a voice vote, Sean?
Yes.
I think we do.
Okay, so we give you a voice vote, Sean.
So Dean Serwin?
Hi.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long?
I.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
True. So now we're gonna move swiftly along to item number three, the special tax renewal. It's recommended that the library board of trustees finalize their recommendations to city council regarding the terms of renewal for the library special tax that will be on the November eighth, twenty twenty-two general municipal election ballot. I believe we do have public comment on this. Does this give appropriate time for that?
Yep.
Okay, Margaret?
Okay, hi. Um, so I am on the Measure L, we're calling it Measure L now, committee, and we've been weighing the whether or not we should support going with a a term limit, I guess, for this renewal or to do an evergreen. And Dean, I don't know where we stand. We're sort of going back and forth on this. So I'm here to support whatever we do, but I think, you know, if we wanna get it passed, so perhaps it's more palatable to do a term limit, you know, seven to ten years. But we're waiting for our consultants to guide us, and I think Dean is looking through all the legal language. So I'm just here to let you know what we're thinking. So, which, which is a little bit of, a little bit of both here.
Would it be safe, from what I'm hearing you say, Margaret, and without putting words in your mouth, is it safe to say that the position of the committee is that they want this to pass and that whatever term it needs to be to get it passed is what the committee wants?
I, I think that's a good summary. I mean, we would love the evergreen option because, you know, it takes a lot of resources to put on a campaign, and it's just thousands of dollars. So to have to do this in too short of a period doesn't make sense. But again, we do wanna get it passed. So I think the longer the term, the better. Ideally, would be an evergreen. So I think that's our committee position.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your weighing in.
Thank you.
Sally, have a public comment?
Yes, I'm a member of the public, Sally Killie. We have all been thinking about this, and as it unfolded, it seems ambiguous as to whether it really does outlaw evergreen taxes for local entities. Seems like our consultants are saying other jurisdictions, torrents, other clients of theirs are putting evergreen provisions on November ballots. So the language is really complicated. And since they didn't even get enough petition votes to get it on this ballot, the way a couple more years, why do they think they're going to make the ballot then? So I guess, I, I'm not speaking for the committee, but myself, I am in favor of the evergreen provision and whether that means by the, by the time July comes, we know we don't have to put in that disclaimer about ten years, or if we find we do, I'm now in favor of putting that on. If it's illegal, we're gonna go for ten years.
So do we know, what is the absolute drop dead date for the language for the ballot?
July, July twentieth, we have to go to city council, because that's the last city council meeting before the deadline.
Am I allowed to speak as a public person?
I think we have to go to, you have to close public and then go to, yeah.
Um, do we have any other public comments?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, speaking as a concerned library board of trustee members, I have looked into this matter because it, again, thank you, Sean, for the notes, and I appreciate that there's been some question among staff, amongst other trustee members and city council as to the applicability and probity of going forward with the evergreen versus term reviews. As Sally, in her public comment pointed out, from what we've been told, the initiative that was being put forth to make a change to the constitution regarding taxation is being waived for this election and going forward with twenty twenty-four. In reviewing the actual language changes to the, or proposed language changes to the constitution, it does not actually say regarding local taxation, that there must be a distinct term duration. It does say that you must state the duration of the tax. Under the state taxes, there's language that implies strongly that they want a definite term. But it does not say that under the language changes to the article that relates to local taxation. I am not a government lawyer. I'm not a constitutional law scholar. So I would propose that the city attorney weigh in for us on the question of, one, if the proposed changes actually would, in fact, require a definite term of year duration for local tax to be renewed, extended, imposed. There's all these definitions in the language, the constitution, they all come down to the same thing. And two, if they don't go in twenty twenty-two, but they go in twenty twenty-four, we have an interesting conundrum here. The tax actually does not expire, the current term of the, of the special library special tax does not expire until June of twenty twenty-four. The reason that we're putting it on the election, this go around, is because well, June's before November.
Yeah.
So we would either have to have no tax, have it fail, or not fail, but expire, and then start from scratch several months later, or we would have to have a special election next year if we don't do it this year, and that would cost tens, if not close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, and it's just, and the only tax that's, there are new measure that's failed in the last fifteen years that I'm aware of in South Pasadena was a special off-year election. So I don't think that's advisable. That's why we're on now. So the question becomes the way, the wording of that initiative, which again appears to have failed for twenty twenty-two, but it said any tax imposed from the, from January first, twenty twenty-two, would have to meet the requirements of it within twelve years or be renewed, that would pass again, following the actual requirements. So that raises the question of, if we pass this in twenty twenty-two and they pass it in twenty twenty-four, but the tax that we pass in twenty twenty-two doesn't actually begin until twenty twenty-four, would that fall under the, from the beginning of that year, that calendar year prohibition, that would presumably be in that initiative in twenty twenty-four?
If that's, if that's how they write it, they may write it differently.
They may write it differently, but presumably they would do the same thing, hey, this calendar year, anything that happened this year, it is, now, I don't know if that opens that up to unconstitutional claims, because it's trying to retroactively discontinue something. But I think that's the second question we would wanna ask the city attorney is, would the tax be imposed this year because we pass it this year, or would it be imposed in twenty twenty-four? And I'm using impose the legal definition of the constitution in twenty twenty-four, because that's when the tax would actually take over, renew.
You, you could address that in the wording of the initiative, to make it clear that you are superseding the existing tax and are intending for a new tax to be effective.
Well, then that would affect the term if you're not going with perpetuity, if the terms start two years earlier.
We would be going in perpetuity in that instance. And again, based on the, the contentions of the U T. It is not a perpetual tax. It is a tax that will be imposed until repealed by the will of the voters.
Correct.
By subsequent will of voters. So it is not perpetual, because it can be repealed.
Well, can anything be repealed?
Technically, yes. And it is semantics, but we did, we went through this with the U T. There were some people who said, wait, this is a perpetual tax. And we said, no, it's not. And we, we had a discussion, and they were satisfied that, yes, it's not perpetual, because it can be, it's specifically repealed. It's set up to be possibly repealed.
And indeed, there was an effort.
To be prior, prior to the repeal. There had been prior, a previous, uh, uh, motion, measure N, which was to repeal the U T, which we defeated. It was very interesting, because it was the only time we had, no, we wanted people to vote no. We've asked you to vote yes on everything else. We want you to vote no this time. Uh, and they listened. My personal feeling, as a member of the public and as a library board of trustee, looking at the facts, and thank you again for the very detailed analysis that you provided to us, Kathy. Aside from the initial passage in nineteen ninety-four, which was pretty close to the bone, the, the renewals of this have all been overwhelming enthusiastic, all eighty to eighty-seven percent, including in, in challenging years. We also recently saw the U T be renewed, the utility users tax renewed in the last election cycle, which was during the pandemic. And that was also overwhelming as an evergreen. So my personal feeling is that we should go with, based on the instruction from, one, the city attorney, and two, there is a consultant that I understand the committee to renew this tax has engaged, that has a great deal of experience, as our public comment pointed out, they are consulting with other jurisdictions that are doing similar renewals of taxes, asking that they be made in perpetuity or until repealed by the, by the voters. And they have told the, the committee initially that the others are going forward with this, and do not, in fact, feel that the initiative, whether it was on twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-four, in fact, would have blocked that. And as I, I mentioned earlier, I have looked at the rather convoluted language, and I think the, the gymnastics that would need to take place is, there is one article of the constitution that deals with state taxes. There is another article of the constitution that deals with local taxes. The language of the state tax article would have to be imputed into the language of the local article. And they made changes to both, and the initiative writers, at least at present, have chosen not to use the same language as they used under state tax or local tax, which to my uneducated eye reads that there is in fact not a prohibition on a, an evergreen, so to speak, tax for a local tax rate. Uh, Diana, what is it called? Ad valorem? What is the?
Ad.
Yeah, tax on product. So that would be my, my statement, is that I think that we should propose to get answers from the city attorney, because I don't think we've ever gotten an actual answer on that, and also get advice from the committee's consultant, if we're allowed to take that advice under advisement. And pending that, that we go with an evergreen, and if we hear from either or both, that eh, it's a question, then we go for nine years. And I think nine years for the simple reason that if we go ten years, then we're back in the same conundrum in the future of nineteen months before having to renew instead of seven months before. And I think it's an easier sell just a touchy feeling to the, to the voter to say, this is expiring next year, we need to renew it now, as opposed to this is expiring in two years, we need to renew it now. And, and that gets confused.
I thought the options were five or seven or perpetuity.
You can do whatever.
Yeah, you can do whatever.
Oh, I see.
We could make it for two hundred and twenty-seven days and three hours, if we want it.
Yeah, we were just, if we do do a term, you would wanna do an odd.
I would wanna do an odd so that we, we come up for renewal.
Seven months ahead.
That the election that we're renewing is seven months before expiration, rather than nineteen months before expiration, for that, that touchy feeliness of the average voter being confused by, why are you doing it so early? Because then we have to, communication is challenging. People get confused, because all, they're hearing so many voices. Right now, at, at this election cycle, there does not appear to be anyone stomping up and down going, no, we don't want to renew the library tax. And
And I will remind that on our city survey, fire department was number one, library, as I recall, was number two.
We had the highest excellency rating of any department, for any quality line.
And I believe in your, what you pointed out was excellent or good. We have more than ninety percent of the respondents. I think that the fact that we are not back to pre-pandemic numbers, but we are seeing library cards being asked for in an aggressive number, we're seeing people coming back into the library, we're seeing, I think, really gangbusters numbers with kids programs, that there is, there's been no diminution in the appeal of our library to our populace. So I think there's every reason to believe that we will have an enthusiastic response to this. As with other measures, anecdotally, it's not getting people to convince them to say yes, it's getting them to recognize, oh, it's on the ballot, you should go vote. Don't just skip over that to get to what you want to vote for. You want to vote for this as well. So that's my statement. And I'm sorry I took so long.
So tonight, what, what, what do we as the library board of trustees, do we need to come up with the actual wording tonight? Is that what you?
No, you don't need to come up with the wording. I mean, I drafted some wording, and we'll, we can work on that with the city and the city attorney. But we don't need you guys to work on the wording. I mean, the only, I guess the only question is, um, I, did I keep them in this packet? You know, over the years, it's always been very simple, like Ryan said last week, and then the, the last time we put in this business about seven days a week in technology, which I think is unnecessary. I think people just keep it simple. And so I would recommend that we say something like what we've said before, which is to, um, this is the draft that I, that I'm suggesting, to provide funding for the operation and maintenance of the South Pasadena Public Library, shall an ordinance be adopted extending South Pasadena Special Library Special Tax, which is due to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to remain in effect until otherwise terminated by a majority vote of the electorate in South Pasadena?
I think that is incredibly well thought out. As I was saying, the more we add into there, the more we're opening it up to confusion, which is why I would not want to do the, if we can't do the evergreen, then we want to. I think we need to, we need to take advice and counsel from the city attorney, from the committee's chair, or consultant, and then make a decision to either go with the evergreen or go with a term of years, and not, not, not to try to, to.
Yeah, I agree. It's too confusing.
We don't wanna confuse it. And that's why this other one, I'm really impressed that it passed in twenty fifteen, because this does get into weeds a little bit, and people die for also making an actual statement.
I guess I would, I would say that from my perspective, what I would need from you tonight is, if possible, consensus about the term. And you could, it could be, this is our consensus pending answers from the city attorney, but I have to prepare a staff report for city council for June fifteenth. So that's deadline is like three days away. So knowing what you guys are thinking would be really helpful, even if, even if we're gonna be kind of waiting on those answers from the city attorney.
I have a couple of questions. Well, first, I'm for a specific term. I just think it's, it's an easier sell, and I just think whether it's seven years or nine years, it's a long time, and, and we know we get it through, and that's the most important thing. But I have a couple of questions. As far as properties that are exempt and things like that, do we have a say in that part of it? As if you ever wanna make change, I noticed vacant properties are exempt. I don't know why vacant properties would be exempt, they're owned by somebody. And if you make less than eighty percent of the median area income, you're exempt, which on its face is fine, but what if, what if one of your properties is exempt as a rental property you have? I think if you've got an income producing property, but your income is happening and, and live somewhere else, and your income is, is eighty percent of median, why should your income producing property be exempt? Maybe your personal residence is good. And also, I noticed on the non-residential properties, and I know for rental property would, should come under, I think, non-residential is intended to be commercial, it should come under that. But it looked like residential property, it's based on square footage of the building of the house, whereas non-residential is based on the size of the, of the lot.
Correct.
So I didn't know why that is, and it seems like that should be more based on what the property, like if it's a commercial property, what it's generating, it's a more fair tax. So I mean, who gets into, do we have any say over that?
Well, those were, those parameters were established in nineteen ninety-four, and they've never changed. So
Can they change?
Um, I'm assuming that that's possibility, but I know that the, the city manager and the city attorney both said the less we can change the ordinance, the better, because it just puts people on edge.
If we want to change this, we can change anything we want.
Vacant property is the easiest one to change.
Except then we have, that has to be in the measure.
Okay.
And we have to say, should we renew and change it so that, and then we're asking people to do two things. And again, I, I appreciate your point that we wanna do whatever's going to get us over the humps the easiest. That's gonna make it two humps to go.
Yeah.
Well, and there's very few vacant.
Okay, that's, I guess, I was.
But it's, it's an excellent point. I don't know why a vacant property would be exempt. I think that getting into how much the profitable something is, where you're on a slippery slope to hell on that.
Yeah.
But it certainly, you know, having it be the square footage of the building, the number of units, a formula based on those things would be fantastic. But again, if we wanted to change that, we'd, we'd essentially be rewriting the statute and, and passing an entirely new law.
And I had one more question. It says on page five, the first paragraph, the last sentence says, the existence of a surplus in one year must be considered by the city levying the special tax for the next year. So is, even if it's like in perpetuity or for nine years, is it not guaranteed that it's levied one year, one, in one year, based on if you have a surplus from the prior year or, or up to a certain amount, it goes down?
Yeah, so I mean, we would likely never have a surplus, because the tax that comes in is twenty percent of the operating budget. So we spend, I mean, you'd have to spend, not spend the, the library's budget.
I thought you were talking about a surplus of the budgeted amount, because I thought if the budget is certain amount, do you?
Yeah, so you have to budget a certain amount, and if you do not budget a certain amount, you have to reduce percentage-wise the amount that you can levy the next year. So if you, you don't meet your required amount by ten percent, then you have to reduce your, your levy the next year by a little percentage. So, but again, it's highly unlikely that that would ever come to pass.
I seem to recall from reading this that the amount that the city has to give us, they have actually given us several hundred thousand dollars more than that. So the idea that we'd end up with a surplus is pretty unlikely, because the city's having to give us more than, than the minimum anyway, just to get us to cover a hundred percent.
I thought it was talking about a surplus in what's collected vis a vis a budgeted amount. In other words, you budget, you're gonna use X, X dollars, excuse me, and you take it more.
I think that it means if you collect the tax and you don't use it all that year, then it, then it rolls into the next year.
Did you see the movie falling down?
But this is, then it seemed like there was some discretion in the following year in levying the special tax. The existence of a surplus in one year, which that follows the sentence about the surplus based on the special tax, must be considered by the city in levying the special tax for the next year.
So maybe you, you, you do less. There are a lot of municipalities that actually, like the county, they don't always, they have a, they could do up to two percent or the CPI, whichever is smaller. So they actually have the authority to not take two whole percent. And there's some places up in Northern California that are the same, like they, they can take X percent of an increase, but sometimes they just opt not to. So I'm guessing that's saying that the city should take into account that they have a surplus when they go to levy the tax on the voters again, because if you couldn't spend it that year, why are you, you know, levying it against the voters again? That's what I think that that is probably meaning.
It would be lovely to think that the city would have the tax base to be able to increase, would they give us such that the the amount that we collect in the tax would be excess. And I think that's what you're getting to, is if the amount that's collected by the tax creates a surplus in the budget that we don't spend, has there been, to your knowledge, ever a year where we didn't spend a hundred percent of the budgeted amount?
And actually, I think it's, I think it's the converse. It's where the city doesn't fund to its level of effort, and so, because the city has to fund a certain amount, or else it, it doesn't receive the benefit of the parcel tax.
I, well, I, I just read it different. I could be reading along the prior page, second about last paragraph, it says, in order to qualify to receive the special tax revenue, the city must budget an appropriate and minimum required amount to provide for all the elements. the city must budget an appropriate and minimum required amount to provide for all the elements for, for permanent library services. Then it talks about a surplus, which I assume the surplus collected on that special tax. So if you get a surplus, which is over the amount budgeted, because sometimes you collect more, you, you have a surplus. City of California's, that's more than anticipated, then that's taken into consideration in the next year. And my only question was, then is it discretionary whether that tax, even though approved, is levied in a subsequent year? Right, I guess you're saying possibly, but it's always levied.
Yeah, my, my point was that the, the required minimum, the city actually gave us over three hundred thousand more than that required minimum, plus the levy from the tax, just to get to the budget of the library. And we still didn't get all the money the library actually asked for.
And, and I see what you're saying about the surplus, that we collected a surplus, but you really can't collect a surplus, because the tax rule is what it is, you know, the tax, the.
Well, sometimes people don't pay.
Right, so then you're collecting less, you're unlikely to collect more than what the tax rule.
Well, very valid.
Sometimes on a budgeted amount.
We're, we're trying to develop the city and thereby to increase the number of properties in the city, which would increase the amount of this tax. So there is a possibility in further years, five, seven years down the line, that the, the actual property tax role might increase. But at present, based on recent history.
I mean, I'm hoping Mission Valley gets a building permit, we have seven patios and the Carol Lot and something across the street, it's a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential things in, in the, in the five to seven year timeframe, I think. But right now, I don't, I don't see that being an issue. And again, based on the fact that the city had to cough up three hundred thousand, three hundred sixty, I think you said?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's been, you know, a couple hundred thousand.
Two, three, two, three hundred thousand dollars. Over the required minimum, just to get to the minimum budget, including the, the tax revenue. All the city would need to do would be cough up less, and we'd still get to a hundred percent, even if the tax rule increased, not to, to sound nefarious. But, you know, again, it's the city giving more than their required amount, they, they could just go down closer to that required amount and still be at a hundred percent. And again, which we'll talk about in a few months, we have a budgetary request, the city never gives us everything we ask. So even with the tax, we're not getting all, all the money we'd like. That a fair statement?
I think that this, this year, the budget cycle has been really great. We've had a, a really responsive, interactive kind of process, in terms of the CIP especially, the capital improvement projects, and actually getting things documented and listed on that document that we need, that hasn't happened in many years. So I'm feeling pretty hopeful about, you know, that there's a recognition that we need a number of things here for the building especially. Yeah, so I think that, um, but sure, there's always, yeah, I mean, would I like three more staff members? But sure, but we're not asking for that. So yeah, I, you know, we asked for a, a full time staff member this fiscal year, and that's, that's a big ask. So I feel like, you know, we're in the place with the budget.
And it was recommended by staff.
Yeah, it was recommended by the city manager.
Okay, good. Well, not, not to imply that the city is, is shirking us in any way. Again, as I said, they're giving significant amounts over and above the minimum required by the statute. So I don't, I don't feel, not to minimize it, it's an excellent question and concern that should be discussed. But I don't think it's an issue that we have to worry about having too much money, unfortunately.
Well, then going back to this draft, Kenny, what would your, what would that last line, what would, if, if you were to put a term limit on it, you would say to remain and to affect? What for?
Seven, nine, it doesn't.
So that would just be?
You just, you just want the term of years.
Yeah.
Would, it is, are you opposed conceptually to the idea of the evergreen? Or are you opposed to it because you're concerned that this initiative that might or might not be on the ballot would interfere with it? Or you're opposed to it because you feel that the voters might not accept it? Or any?
I think, I frankly, I, I think it'll pass if it's evergreen. And I'm not opposed conceptually to an evergreen, if, if it was on there, I would vote for it. I'm just looking forward to make sure it gets passed, so, so there's no issue. So this is the third, third option.
Annie, Annie would like to say something?
She needs to be unmuted.
Can we go back to Dean's kind of request to the city attorney? I don't have clarity still on what we need to decide on tonight, Kathy, given the memo that you have to provide to the city council. Do we need to make a recommendation tonight? And I just want to be clear about that as we have this discussion.
Yeah, so for the timeline that we proposed, which is to go to city council on the fifteenth to get their direction, and then go back to city council to actually put the measure on the ballot in July. That would mean that tonight, I would like to get, whether it's a unanimous recommendation or not, I'd like to be able to report back to the city council, you know, you're an advisory body to the council. So, so this is that opportunity for you guys to, to make an advisement to the council about what you think should be done.
And so there, is there time to get that input that Dean was looking for from city attorney on those specific questions? Or?
Well, it won't be, I, I mean, there's, there's, I guess we have a meeting, what, June twelfth? I think it would be hard to get another round of, a, a discussion with you guys to get a final decision. So that's why I'm thinking you might want to think about recommending something pending satisfactory answers to these two questions from the city attorney.
Can, can we propose something that we're sometimes referred to as pleading in the alternative? Which is that we make a recommendation that if we get a positive response from both the city attorney and the committee's consultant, related to the inapplicability of the proposed initiative to this particular tax, that we go evergreen. And if we get a negative response towards that, then we go term of years, and we set that term that I would like to say nine. But I will go with seven if, if that's what everyone else wants. Would that be, would that be something that we could give you to take to council at this time to be firmed up by the, well before the twenty third?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that that's, that, I, you know, I need to work with the city attorney to try to get the answers. But like you've said, I mean, we know that it's not on the ballot in twenty twenty-two. The people that I've talked to indicated that they think that it's probably would be challenged, you know, if they're, if they do pass it in twenty twenty-four and are trying to invalidate voters.
Right.
Things that voter, I mean, it's gonna be challenged right and left, and so it's not.
The constitutionality of this is questionable.
That's exactly what I'm thinking, I mean, at this point, they didn't even qualify for an initiative. So thinking about their perspective, why would they increase the odds for themselves to inhibit their ability to qualify an initiative by reaching back to January one of this year? It just doesn't.
I don't think they've reached back to January one of this year, my question could then, if, because the tax that we're passing this year doesn't actually commence until twenty twenty-four, because we're not talking about wiping out.
But you can address that by making a tax effective, a new, a different tax effective now. You can obviate the issue.
What if we're just continuing this tax in perpetuity, so it's not a new tax, if you wrote it that way? I think, because I think the way the language is now, it's a new tax or something.
We're saying renew, no, we're saying should we renew?
Extend, but.
We said, which is, which is due to expire on June thirty of twenty twenty-four to remain in effect. So therefore, it would not expire in twenty twenty-four. So it would not be imposed in twenty twenty-four, it would be imposed now, and I think that would be our position.
Well, how's our initiative written now, to, that relates back to?
Oh, it's, it's really wacky, but it does, there's a clause in it that says, any tax that was passed from January first, twenty twenty-two, through the date of passage of this initiative, will be, will have twelve months to prove that they, that they're in compliance with the terms of this initiative, or it will have to be repassed in compliance.
So I don't, yeah, I don't, doesn't sound, I don't think this is a tax being passed.
Yeah, so we would have, we would have to say, because of this wording, and now actually Kathy, this wording is prescient on your part. This tax is not actually expiring in June of twenty twenty-four. It's being extended, as what Diana is saying, it's being extended on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. It's being extended, so it doesn't actually in fact expire.
Right.
So therefore, it's now, so even if they were to pass this in twenty twenty-four, and it would apply to a local adverberian tax, which I don't believe it currently is written to do so, it would still not apply to this, because this was passed in twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-four.
Well, that's our argument, I think it's right, but yes, somebody can challenge that.
Well, and again, as, as both Kathy and Diana have already stated, there's already people who've said they will challenge the, a constitutionality of that. If they were to try and go backwards, even to the beginning, even if they passed it this year, to go back to the beginning of this year. So I think that, I think we're safe anywhere you look at it. And that's, that's what I'm told the consultants believe as well.
I mean, on your first question to the city attorney, which had to do with that duration language, I thought the same thing. Like, well, the duration is in perpetuity, I mean, it doesn't say it has to have a limited duration, it just says you have to announce the duration.
That's the issue between the state article and the local article. The state article actually, and I don't have it in front of me, I should print it that page, but it, it does actually say it must have a specific term duration.
The local does not.
The local does not, the language of the locals and the language of the state are different.
I, I, it's one of those substances.
I mean, I think they would try to say, oh, yeah, 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 the local applied, but they, they made very specific language changes to state, they made very specific language states to local, and they're not identical. So normal rules of construction would say you meant different things in different places. So, but again, I, 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 I'm now very comfortable going with the, the so-called evergreen now, because we would be passing it now, and it would therefore not expire on June thirty.
I think it's fine to get the city council recommendation, if, either way. Because I don't think they'll be confused like I feel as.
But I want to, I, I like the simplified language here, I don't, I don't think we should get into parsing out language of the measure. I think the measure should say, should we, should we extend this? That was supposed to expire on June thirtieth, so that it will run for, until revealed, like you ordered it. I'm good with that.
The only, the only question I have in all, in all of the past, it's, it's begun with shall the ordinance, shall the ordinance? But Kathy, in your draft, you started out to provide funding for the operation, shall an ordinance? It, do you think this would throw people off if they thought this is a new tax, they're not gonna read any more into it?
Um, I don't, I mean, in twenty fifteen, they used to keep the South Pasadena. Yeah, but that's to keep, right, so to provide funding, I mean, I think it's, it's the same, same construction.
Or to keep funding, or keep funding the operation. I just, I just, I think like with Kenny, I don't, I don't want to scare people off to think, what is this a new? I think we need to hone in on, this is just extending a continuation of.
How about maintain, we've used that word before.
So.
Maintain funding?
Yeah, to, to maintain funding for operation rather than provide. Because as you pointed out, provide makes it sound like.
Right.
And I don't want it to.
That's, that's excellent.
So could we, can we use, can we use continue, or can we use continue?
To continue funding for the operation.
We can keep the maintenance.
So to continue funding the operation and maintenance of the South Pasadena Library.
Well, that certainly does say, let's keep, we're gonna keep doing something.
I would say, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good catch, Annie, we can do that to continue the operation maintenance.
Continue funding.
Now, prior initiatives also included at the current level of library services.
Yeah, I think things is just, yeah, people gotta see that things have changed. Yeah.
I, yeah, I, I, I don't think anyone's gonna look and see, well, can't say. I think very few people would look and say, wait a minute, two cycles ago, you said this, three cycles ago, you said that. So I, I think it's, it's just the, you know, to, to continue funding for the operate, I, I like the word force the limit, to continue funding for the operation
Okay.
of, of the maintenance of the South Pasadena Public Library. Shall an ordinance be adopted extending South Pasadena's special lib, library special tax?
We put extending it, it talks?
No, no, I think that.
No, it's true.
But, but I, lawyer, lawyer question here, should we throw in the word otherwise? Where, which is otherwise due to expire. Because that way, then we, we're, we're building the, the wall around, it actually doesn't expire on June thirtieth, it's going, it's continuing on. So the action we're taking today in twenty twenty-two is doing this extension, not something to take effect in twenty twenty-four.
I had done a little bit of research, and here's what I developed. To maintain funding for the operation and maintenance of the South Pasadena Public Library, shall an ordinance be adopted continuing South Pasadena's library's special tax until terminated by a majority vote of the electorate?
Yeah, that's continuing a little bit further.
It sounds like maybe a broader, you know, I just.
Yeah.
Is, does the lack of reference to the otherwise intended expiration date?
I did that deliberately.
In twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen.
Any ambiguity that this is an act that we're taking now.
Right. But also in twenty fifteen, there was no reference to the other, the, the expiration date. So I think we're good.
Well, it said to the ledger text for eight years, yeah.
No, 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 but the expiration date, in, in, in ninety-nine, oh five, oh nine, it, it always said, which is due to expire, which is due to expire, so.
Yeah, Diana, what was yours again?
That's great.
To maintain funding for the operation and maintenance of the South Pasadena Public Library, shall an ordinance be adopted continuing South Pasadena's library special tax until terminated by a majority vote of the electorate?
And that shortens, that shortens the language too.
Can you note that to me?
Sure.
I, I just think people are gonna read it and think the tax is just about to expire, so it's a little misleading to them when it doesn't really expire for a year and a half or two, I don't know when, when in twenty twenty-four expires.
However, it will expire before the next general election in South Pasadena, so to that extent, it's not misleading.
Okay.
Because we only have an, an election unless we pay to have a special election, and it's expensive.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that.
Well, otherwise, they might think it's expiring in twenty twenty-two. That's why we're expecting it, that it's gonna expire.
But if you're voting to extend something, you're voting to extend it. Doesn't matter when, when, when the expiration happens. We're just saying, hey, and, and, and this is the point that I, I feel confident that the committee is going to make about this is, it's expensive to keep coming back and asking to renew something that people overwhelmingly have shown historically they intend to renew it. And that, for that reason, it sort of diminishes the, the concern about they doesn't expire this year, next year, the year after. It's, we just know you want to keep this going. So let's just keep it going, so that we don't have to keep spending the city's money, because it costs sixty or eighty thousand dollars to put it on an existing ballot, and a couple hundred thousand to do it on a special ballot. So I feel very confident that the electorate here in South Pasadena will, if questioned about it, understand that.
In the sample ballot, does it have fiscal impact? I'm like, it does for statewide initiatives or, so we can put on there what the cost is to keep rebuilding it.
And, and we actually, there's an argument made in favor, and if there's an opposition, we get an opportunity to make a rebuttal to that opposition. So.
The city attorney, a partial analysis.
Yeah, and there's also the city attorney, a partial analysis.
So maybe, I don't know if we can recommend them to put in the, the cost of it. So.
The, the in favor argument is that.
Right, the cost to keep coming back.
That's an excellent, nice idea, Kenny, and I'll, I'll make sure that the, the committee will. That's an excellent idea, Kenny. I'll I'll make sure that the the committee will read the minutes of this meeting. So Sean, if you can make note of that, that we we hope the committee will take into account um, when making amendments. Part of the reasoning behind the uh making it an evergreen is to avoid the needless cost of renewal. Which is significant.
And just so you guys know, in the past, I think that the committee has drafted that in favor argument, but the city attorney indicated that the council actually has to take an action to delegate that authority. So we are going to re- recommend they do that, so that then you would be the designated drafter of the, not you, like the the city would be the drafter of that argument.
They they've actually asked me to sign it.
What's that?
They're asking to sign that argument, so I'll 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 be able to face under advisement this recommendation, because I was like, no, it should say this, please.
So can I make the question?
Do you have feelings about in perpetuity or evergreen versus a limited term?
I would like an evergreen.
Yeah, me too.
Kenny, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna. No, I mean. I think it's gonna pass anyway.
Yeah, that's.
Um, so if it's a close call, you know, if it had been historically a close call, which it's now, I'd feel more strongly about it, and it's something I would vote for anyway, in perpetuity. So I'm 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 fine with that, just.
What do you think, Annie?
Yes, I would strongly agree with in perpetuity also.
So should we take him a motion?
Yeah, I think that would be great, so you have a record.
Uh, Sean, did you get what uh Diana had proposed as the revised uh language?
Yes, was that two?
And you don't mean like that, all you need is just a.
A motion for a term?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so uh uh as the president, can I make a motion? Or go ahead, there's somebody else make a motion.
I don't, I think you, you can always make the motion, but typically, the chair waits for somebody else, but there's nothing to.
But what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask for someone to make a motion regarding the uh our decision as to the term.
Well, I make a motion that uh the board uh we
Recommend.
recommend that it's in perpetuity that we uh, the wording that we're gonna present to the city council.
Can I revise that?
Yes, you may.
Uh offer a friendly amendment, that we make a motion that we uh request that the city council uh ask for renewal of the library special tax until uh terminated by majority vote of the electorate. I I really want to avoid the use of the word.
Yeah, I think that sounds better.
Yeah.
I want to avoid permanent perpetuity.
Yeah.
Second.
Sean, I think Kenny have for a second.
I thought, uh, was it Kenny or Annie that had the second?
It's a photo finish.
It's the first second.
Kenny can take it, yes.
Okay.
Be on the record the right way.
And thank you for the friendly amendment.
Okay, uh, roll call. Uh, Dean Serwin.
Hi.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
FJ Pratt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you. I really enjoyed that that discussion. No, it was really, and Kenny, thank you for brought up some excellent points. And it's felt in the past sometimes like this board sort of just was, yeah, let's do it, and without any real collegial discussion, so this would be great.
What what law do you practice against?
A general civil litigation. Of employer defense, intellectual property, it's always seeing, trying to see both sides.
Yeah.
I don't. This is like, this is like such a learning curve, I love it, and I mean, wow, very impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't see all those nuances.
I know.
I see the big picture then.
No, the the picture is a big picture. You need, you need.
That will never go.
Right, I always, right, but it always comes up, yeah, it's never going.
No, but I'm I'm very big on language and what words are used. Well, excellent, so uh we have um one more, trustees and a report on twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three work plan. It's recommended that the library board of trustees identify three fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two accomplishments and three goals for fiscal twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three work plan. Uh, to give some background on this, there is the Congress of Commissions.
Commissioners Congress.
Commissioners Congress, which um, is everyone invited to, or do I just come?
No, everybody.
Okay, good. Um, uh, so that is on the.
Do, I will look it up while we.
I think it's the twenty second.
Yes.
I I I guess it hasn't happened in in a few years, um, it it, but it's going to happen again. And they're asking each commission uh to uh come up with a few items that they're, they've accomplished and a few items that they're going for. Uh, generally, the instruction, as I understood it, was to uh look at the city's overall general plan and pick out the things that are your bellywets. The only thing we've got on the city's general plan specifically is what we just did, which is to um to seek passage of the renewal of the library special tax. So that, I think those are about saying that that is one of our twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three accomplishments or or goals that we have in in mind. Um, uh, I had previously had a conversation about this with Diana. Not by right and ground acts, just one person.
Not a number of eyes.
Uh, just to ask her, because she has a a long history, uh, what kinds of things might be meant brought up. Um, and I I wrote down some lovely things and left that piece of paper at home. Um, but so we have the one thing that we have goals. Bianca, you wrote a an excellent summary of things that we had done last cycle. Um, that we could easily grab a couple. One thing I would like to propose that we include in our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two accomplishments is the um honoring of our volunteers and in perpetuity, return to in, return to in-person library. Um, standardization of library hours, I don't know if those are two separate issues or if that's one issue. And the in-person, and the in-person recognition of our library volunteers. And we could have a statement of the number of hours that the volunteers uh give um, uh each year. Uh, I think those would be excellent uh things for us to tout. Um, I'm open to.
What about the the uh recognition that Kathy got with the?
Yeah.
Really, or, oh, then maybe that's not our, yeah, yeah, I forget, yeah. What what about, do we wanna say, mention about the art, the strategic planning process, though?
I think that's twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. So, um, but but before we go on to that, I would like to put on the record, because I don't think we can do it too many times. Um, how proud we are of our librarian, Kathy Billings, for being mandated. Uh, what was the actual, woman of the distinction?
It sounds like a perfume.
You know? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that, that uh, you smell nice and and you do a lot of work.
It should come with a scepter or a crown or something, something.
I know.
But so I'd like to, I'd just like to acknowledge that in my time. So, so I think our three things that I would propose, uh, and it, please throw out other ones. Uh, return to in-person. Uh, standardization of library hours. Uh, and the recognition of our uh volunteers for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, per the city's um uh work plan.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, thank you. Strategic plan, uh, we will be advocating to the extent that we're allowed to uh, the renewal of the library special tax. Um, we will be uh working to adopt a new strategic plan for the library for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty seven, is that where twenty three to twenty eight? For twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight, and then we need a third one. And I'm 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 open, and again, I'm open to others, but we can, we want at least one word for what we're gonna work to accomplish this year. HVAC fixing?
Well, I was thinking about, I mean, so if we apply for the state um infrastructure and critical uh systems grant funding, that would be in March. Um, so that would be this coming fiscal year. And that's a big deal, you know, getting that application together and doing the research, not that you guys would be doing it per se, but it would be a big accomplishment for the library to, you know, make that request and try to get that grant funding, so.
How often have we done that in the past?
Never, never.
Oh, then heck, yes.
I mean, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. There's, there's um there may be more money in the new budget, the new state budget, but my understanding now is that um the, they they had way more applicants than they can fund, but they're saving a hundred and ten million for the second round. Um, so that might be, you know, that that's, that's a goal is to solicit that.
What does the commission, what's the the board do with regard to that, though? Because it's really, I mean, that's, that's the department.
Yeah.
But that's not.
Do we approve it? Do we request it? Do we support it?
Well, you would be, yeah, you'd be supporting and insist, and, you know, we would be talking about it, but yeah, you're right, it's not something you would necessarily take an action on. I mean, I always go back to policies. I know Diana said you're never gonna get your policies done, you should hire someone to do it, and I talked to the staff about that a little bit, and um, I'm.
I like that.
I know, I mean, we do too.
We're we're on policies.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of your main.
What was the response to hiring a consultant?
The response was that it's um, that the policies are so specific to the institution, you know, it's not like finance, maybe, where there's a standard that's that's across the board, that all finance departments are gonna use those same policies, that there's just a lot of um fiddling for your specific institution.
I that, libraries, a library is a library. Libraries have certain concerns, so a consultant who has worked with other libraries on their policy will be able to assist and support us in formulating our specific policies. But it's not like a lot, our policies are not going to in any way, shape or form look like the policies of any of the nearby libraries or any library in in Wichita, Kansas.
Yeah, I think some policies are definitely something that people could help us with, and some of the others, maybe not as much.
Kathy, is it, I don't know if you've yet drafted the scope of work for the strategic planning consultant. But perhaps the scope of work can be amended to include.
Um, you had mentioned that I don't know if this Barry Dunn, I would think we would be more likely to work directly with someone like Susan Kent, and we wouldn't do it with Barry Dunn, because that's not really their their strength, um.
You'd also sort of be paying twice that, right?
What's that?
We'd almost be paying twice, pay the 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 company and then pay the consultant within the company.
Well, I mean, if we, if we were to to look for someone to help us with policies, I think we would probably do a new I think we would do a new scope of work and look for someone to help us with that. I don't, I don't know that we would add it on to the strategic planning. Scope of work, it's possible.
Policy is something that we, we actually do.
It's your responsibility, I mean, that's one of your main responsibilities, is just that policy.
Not looking, not looking to fail, but the things we list have to be, things that we know can be done, or can they be aspirational?
It could be aspirational, I mean, we'll, we'll get some policies done, you know, we might not, I wouldn't say revise all the policies.
Has been since we last revised the policies?
Well, the last time I did the the research, it was like, was it like thirteen years on average per policy that they've not been looked at? So we've been, we have a whole framework for for tackling this, we just staff haven't had time to do it. So um, we have some priority policies that we wanna work on first, um.
So we can review and maybe tackle them a few one by one and just make recommendations. That could be something that's gonna be interesting.
You might consider forming an ad hoc, doing a PRA request to libraries, to nearby libraries, ask for their
library policies.
And then the ad hoc develops the policies and submits them for consideration by the board.
Um, I I guess that's certainly a way that we could go. I think at this point, what we're looking for is um, just the the third tier, and I like this as a third tier. The implementation of it, that actually probably sounds like the way to actually get it done. Uh, because then people could work outside of this once a month meeting.
Right.
Um, so that's great. Uh, Sean, did you get that? And uh.
And I'm not adverse to a consultant. I mean, I think they're, you know, I don't, we didn't budget for it, but that's something we can address.
I like that idea. And again, we, that's something we can flesh out, but in terms of our third uh prong, so to speak, how would you word that?
Um, well, it's been on there a couple of years in a row, so it says um to publish up to date and distinct, well, we did that, so we we did that, so it actually, we accomplished.
How about just to update library policies?
Yeah, it's library, you know, update library administrative policies.
Library policies.
Can we throw in a for the first time in a decade?
Well, some, I mean, some have been updated more recently and some haven't been.
How about do a a um comprehensive review and update for the first time in uh like a over day?
I think Ed Pearson did it. I think Ed Pearson did it. I don't know, that probably is a decade ago now, so you probably get away with saying.
But do we wanna draw attention that we're kind of behind, I mean, I would, I would.
Draw attention in fact, we're gonna do something, we get to keep on doing it here.
So maybe I I just like the, just straightforward.
Yeah, let's, comprehension is probably enough.
Update, review, or re- review and update uh for, you know, the library.
Does anyone have any other thoughts towards that, otherwise we can?
Those sound good.
All right, so Sean, do you have the ready agreement back to us?
So I have uh advocating the renewal of the library special tax, working to adopt.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it'll be something like, um, we'll, we'll, we'll wordsmith it and send it to you.
There's language in the um.
Outreach is the word that we can, yes.
There's language in the actual uh city uh uh plan for us, whatever it says in the actual city plan.
Which is, I just made that up, whatever it is, but it says it's.
It says.
Uh, it just is library personal tax renewal, so to um.
Develop and implement. Conduct outreach related to delivery.
But we're not the advocate for it, I think.
Provide education.
We can't.
Education.
Individually, but not as a committee, or not a meeting.
Individually, but not as, so for example, when I said earlier that I've been asked to sign the one, five signings of the uh argument. I will, I will identi- be identified as library board of trustee president, but I will not be signing as the library board trustee, so it's for identification purposes only. So you, each of us can be out there with community working on this, but then we can tell people that, oh, well, in a, in another part of my life, I'm on the library board of trustees, but I'm not talking to you as a library board trustee.
I think you can even submit a letter to the editor and sign it.
Sure, but you can't say, as a library board of trustee, I I propose, you could, you can just sign, like Kenny, you can sign library board, comma, library board trustee. Um, so we can't advocate, but we can educate and engage in out, community outreach uh related to the effort to renew the library special tax.
So no badgering or threatening.
We can also honor and fair.
Okay, so we got that.
So those, and then in terms of the twenty one, twenty two, it was uh return to in-person standardized hours and.
The volunteer.
Honoring the volunteers.
Or in-person.
Yeah, the in-person honor of the volunteers.
Yeah.
And then a.
Can send it to you.
Okay, great. I think, I think that we've done our due. Uh, if anyone has any uh thing else, and this is our special agenda, so we don't have um statements, but if anyone would like to, I actually like to end every meeting that way. Uh, if anyone has any breach statement they'd like to make.
Do we need a motion for this?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I guess I just wanted to thank the library staff that was volunteering at the API Heritage Month event this past weekend. And it was just really lovely to see um, the diversity of books that you guys offered, and that kind of lends to. Offer that as a support to the community, so thank you for that, Kathy.
You're welcome, it was fun to be there.
Yeah, Kathy was out full force. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for taking uh, the time, another, you know, our our deals one, once a month, but we did two this month. And I'd like to thank everybody for that, and for the uh, just robust uh, congenial. Uh, and thorough discussion of the the matter.
And I had, last night I listened to just a little bit of the budget meeting, went for three hours, and I just caught a little bit, so it was nice that the library. Cause you know, was right there, support, you know, support for the library, so that was good, I, what happened at the end?
Um, what happened at the end, uh, they went through the the SLURF, the American Rescue Plan Funds. And how those might be um, allocated and had a whole conversation about that, it was uh, it was, it was good meeting.
What what is SLURF stands?
SLURF stands for state and local something recovery funds, yeah, something like that.
And Ken, Ken, who we are, the new.
Acting.
Acting, he did, he was great, he said, we're just gonna call it recovery, recovery funds, he was funny, so.
I know, SLURF is kind of.
Yeah.
Can I add one more thing to Kathy's, um, I heard from students that Judy has been visiting the schools, um, kind of advertising the summer reading program, so thank you. I know that takes extra effort to go in person to do that, so we can share um, our appreciation for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the statistics with me, but I think they went to forty eight classrooms, which is a lot of classrooms, so made a Judy, Cindy and Anne. Did that together, um, not this week last week, this week we had about fifteen classes come to us.
Yes.
But the week before, they went out and hit all the elementary schools.
Students were abuzz about it, so please let them know that, yeah.
It was cute, we had kids at the um, AAPI event who said, you know, the 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 mom was like, what's this about? And the kids were like, mom, mom, I already know. So, yeah, the kids, they got it, they 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 learned about it and they've got it on their minds.
Not to go backwards, um, the one city, one book, is that an every year?
This is our third year of doing it, we're on our third iteration, we've done it a little bit differently every year.
So that's not something we should substitute in for the twenty one, twenty two?
No, I don't think so, it's more of a library, I mean, it's a library program, you guys are participating in different facets, but it's, yeah, I think these are good.
And then the kids coming to the library, the library has, it's been wonderful, the the park, and it's been lively.
Yeah.
It's just, it's so lovely to see kids in person again. You know, and they just seem to just, and they love coming to the library. Or and being out in the park.
Yeah, it's, they're away from school.
Yeah, and walking here, you can hear the coming up Diamond Street or, you know, around your neighborhood, yeah, yeah.
Have you seen an uptick in kids coming here after school?
It's been, it's busy after school, especially with teens, there's a lot of kids, I guess they're probably studying, yeah. Some of them are just looping around, but some of them are studying, um, yeah, there've been a lot of uh, young people and the the kids, you know, the family users. With the littler kids, they're just consistent.
Just remember, my my kids would always, we're gonna go to the library after school, and you know, and then we're gonna go here, and then we're gonna go, but it was always. The library was where everyone would come and then scope out.
They do, they come, we have a lot of teams, there's not a room for packing back there.
All the more reason to renew the tax.
I I think everybody, we we scheduled this because I had a, I forget where I agreed, so to a certain date, then I realized, oh, I couldn't do it, so thank you all for.
Well, thank you, everybody, um, as, you know, I I promised we'd always get out in an hour, hour and a half or less, and we did. Uh, we did great work, I'd like to adjourn at eight seventeen.
Sean, can you stop the recording, please?
That was awesome.